Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm calling to order the Committee of the Whole for Public Safety and Human Services. Today is Tuesday, November 18th. Online, we have Councilmember Anderson, and in the room, we have Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council President Kritzler, and myself, Councilmember Stewart. And we have also just been joined online by Councilmember Fields. Thanks for being here. We have a unique circumstance with our agenda today, so we'll be reordering the agenda. We will first go through the action items in Section A and B. Following that, we will skip to items from other committees in Section E before coming back to the informational items in Section C. The council members here in the room have been briefed on the new order. And when we do get to the informational items, due to some staff constraints, those will also be reordered. So I will do my best to call out our items in the correct order today. So starting with Section A of our agenda is the Capital Facilities Plan 2050. General Government. Introducing the briefing today is Deputy Parks Director Dave Tuchek. Welcome.
Hello, councilmembers. Dave Tuchek, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation Department. I'm joined by Cameron Zapata, our Senior Parks Planner, and then also Glenn Coyle, Senior Planner in the Planning Department. Today, we're bringing forward the Capital Facilities Plan 2050. General Government. The plan most recently came before City Council on October 28th, after going through the Planning Commission, which provided a recommendation to council. During the October 28th study session, we presented the financial strategy, and council requested that a narrative of that strategy be incorporated into the Capital Facilities Plan. At today's Committee of the Whole meeting, with the addition of the council requested updates, we are seeking direction to move toward a final resolution with the goal of obtaining approval at the December 2nd business meeting. So now, I will hand off the presentation to Cameron.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Good evening, council. I am here to share the updated Capital Facilities Plan, which has been included in your packet along with the change log. As Dave mentioned, this update includes some clarifying edits, added images for context, and the new finance narrative. The finance narrative explains how different funding sources are used, why they're applied within certain timeframes, and these projections are based on historical estimates. The final budget and financial decisions will be made through the CIP and the budget process to ensure alignment with our current resources, revenues, and the overall project scope. And with that, I'm happy to open it up to any questions or concerns.
Thank you, team. Thanks for being here for what is most likely our final briefing on this awesome Capital Facilities Plan. Council, what are our questions for the team? Council President Kritzler.
I'll just say, I appreciate the work on this by the Planning Commission, by the staff. I appreciate the work that we've done and how the feedback at our study sessions has been integrated into this plan, and I'm good to see it go to consent.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. And I too. Thank you for taking the feedback back to the team and bringing it along. So this way, whenever a community member logs in and they're taking a look at this, then it's easy for them to come along with it and be able to put that story to light. So thank you very much. And I'm happy for this to go to consent.
Thank you so much. Other questions from the council? Not seeing any. I'll just add my comments. Yes, thank you for bringing this back once again. I think that I would always love the financial section to be bigger, and that is just going to be a truth throughout. But I think that it does lay out a path that we can be comfortable with in the sense that we, the council today, are helping draft the order of priorities and all the work that your team has done, of course, across the entire city, in fact. We are helping to lay out the order of priorities and take care of the need to prioritize the long-term planning and maintenance that has been so frequently the conversation of the last few years. And we find ourselves yet again in a tough position with one of our silly facilities. So I think the real gift of this plan is, of course, that it exists, and that the future generations of the council who are approving new CIPs on six-year cycles will be able to have this roadmap. So I really look forward to the city having this in place. Seeing no other comments from the council, are there any objections to this item going to consent on December 2nd, which is our final business meeting of 2025? All right, seeing none, we will have this one back. Thank you so much, everyone. On a related note, our second item today is the adoption of the 2025-2050 Redmond Fire Department Functional Plan. Introducing this item once again is Chief Adrian Shepherd and Deputy Chief Ami Quacroni. Welcome back. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council, and thank you for the pleasure of being here. I'll just immediately turn it over to Deputy Chief Farrell.
Thank you. Name change underway, so Chief Farrell. Chief Quacroni works for a couple of days, and then we'll stop. So, sorry, thank you. No worries.
I apologize. Thank you for the update.
Okay, councilmember. So, good evening. I'm back again, and we're here tonight to present, as you guys requested, at the study session that we had. The Planning Commission's recommended redline edits to the draft of the 2025-2050 Fire Functional Plan. So tonight, we're going to be requesting two actions from council. One is approval of the Planning Commission's revisions to the document that you have in your package. And then subsequently, with those approvals, the approval of those revisions, a direction, we'd like to place this on the consent agenda at the December 2nd meeting. This plan, as you all know, and for the public, this represents the long-range roadmap to ensure that fire and life safety infrastructure stays aligned with the expected growth that we will be seeing through the 2050 horizon and beyond. And as we continue to evolve into a denser, more urban city, especially downtown and overlake, the scope and the complexity of the emergency response is able to change with it. The plan that you all have seen and reviewed aligns our strategic staffing triggers, our station modernization and capital sequencing, our specialized apparatus needs, and any emergency hazards that we foresee into alignment with the full Redmond 2050 comprehensive plan. And because the Growth Management Act requires concurrency with essential public services, adoption by reference is the policy mechanism that protects residents as we continue to grow. With the adoption by reference, we are also now positioned to update our fire impact fees in 2026. And based on the projected development through 2050, with the council approval that will be coming later of the proposed fees, we could unlock about $55 million in new impact fee revenues, which will be about $2.2 million a year. So that's how important adoption of this plan is. That's going to directly support our future stations, equipment, or readiness measures. The Planning Commission's review and their public hearing process produced edits that improved the clarity and some internal consistency in the document, strengthened the references and some of the graphic information, but did not change any of the service standards, the capital needs, or any of the policy direction. And so, as you recall from the Planning Commission report, their recommendation was clear to also adopt the plan, with exception of a few minor edits that they've approved in there. So adopting the plan reinforces our equitable response and performance across our neighborhoods. It allows us to compete for state and federal resilience funding, because now we have an assigned to a plan with a level of service. It will support major readiness across the city, including the economic activity that the growth brings, and it demonstrates responsible, transparent stewardship of our life safety services. So tonight, in summary, again, we'd love to see you approve the Planning Commission's edits and revisions, and then direct staff to bring this forward to the consent agenda on December 2nd. We are available for any questions, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Deputy Chief. And Chief Shepherd, are there questions on this item from the council? There were not a lot remaining last time. Council President Kritzler, go ahead.
Yes, I'll make a similar comment to the last item, but just to, I really do want to recognize the hard work from you all, our Fire Chief, our Deputy Fire Chief, and everyone in pulling this plan together, as well as the Planning Commission's detailed analysis and work, and appreciate having their suggested changes incorporated here. And I also saw that a couple of the pieces of feedback that we gave at our last touch on this were incorporated in this upcoming draft, so just really appreciate that. I think one of the things that we talked about during our last discussion on this is, this is a really big vision, and there are some pieces within here that will get into the details of what does it look like in implementation, especially around some of the capital facilities elements as we go forward. And I look forward to having those discussions. And looking, you know, as we look forward to our budget, both our upcoming biennial budget and our CIP of how we can fund the needs that are identified within this plan, aligned with the needs of our community. But I appreciate kind of having this roadmap here and being able to support the work that you all are doing, the vital work to support our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council on the Fire Functional Plan? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. I'm excited to both approve the changes and also adopt the plan. I think the exciting thing for me is that we're not committing not to just new buildings, but how those buildings get built with sustainability, accessibility, and community benefit at the very core of that. So that's always exciting to me. And taking a look at clearly defined need, what is the condition data funding strategy, and then more so looking for the next part of taking the plan and putting it into action. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the council? Well, I will second the kind words from my colleagues. Much enthusiasm. And are there any objections to this item going to consent on December 2nd? Seeing none, we will take care of this on December 2nd. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much. The next item on our agenda is from Section B, the feedback for study sessions. We'll invite Chief Lowe or Deputy Chief Coats to join us regarding the parking, excuse me, police parking enforcement program.
Thank you, council. Chief Darrell O'Hair. And with me is our new parking program administrator, Jacob Laster. So I'll give the floor to Jacob. He has a couple of words to say, and then we'll take your questions in preparation for the upcoming study session.
Good evening. At the December 9th council study session, we'll provide an update on the city's transition from a vendor-based parking enforcement model to an in-house parking program, or in-house program managed by the police department. This shift will give the city greater control over enforcement operations, improve coordination with other departments, and allow us to better align parking management with Redmond's long-term goals for mobility, growth, and customer service. We are seeking council's direction as we continue refining this program design and implementation.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. We look forward to having a deeper discussion with you on December 9th at the study session. At this time, we'll collect questions from the council for that study session. Council President Kritzler.
Thank you so much, and welcome. Excited. I am actually really excited to be able to bring this in-house. It was something that we budgeted for in our last budget, and I think we've heard a lot of feedback from residents on our parking management, and I think it'll be good for us to have additional kind of control over this. And I'm glad that we'll have a study session to discuss the nuts and bolts of what that's going to look like. One of the things I'm interested in for the study session is to dive a little deeper into the vision for the expanded areas of enforcement. So if you can, I know we got the map in the presentation thus far, but if you can come back with some more details for that, as well as, I think, most of it's within your presentation, but I think if we can have some more details of what we can expect, and especially in some of the neighborhoods that haven't had parking enforcement, you know, what are, what's some of the communication that we'll be doing to neighboring residents, especially around the opportunity to be able to get permits. And I saw that you have a slide about that, but I think understanding the communications, as well as the scope of how far those kind of new zones will go, if there's any more detailed maps or information that we could get, it'd be helpful.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Jacob, welcome. Great to have you. On this, a lot of times when I'm talking to community members, they'll be, and I start sharing data with them as far as what the open spaces look like. Sometimes they're surprised, because if you're just driving around certain areas of downtown, it seems like there's never any parking. But yet, when we take a look at the data, the data shows that actually there is parking available. Do we have, one of the things that I would like to discuss in the study session is how we can do a great job of communicating through wayfinding and also getting just the communication out to people that there actually is more parking than what it might feel like.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the council? Okay, an interest of mine, Jacob, might be inspired a bit by the question from my colleague, but it'd be helpful to understand the connection between the enhanced parking enforcement and customer service that will be occurring in our police department and the shared parking pilot that we know is coming online. And my overall question is really back to that. When we go through this transition, the customer service expectations that we're expecting and what will be different for our residents, it is the lovely council members in front of you, who often are the recipients of feedback on customer service with our current vendor. So this is a very welcome change for a number of reasons, but looking forward to the discussion on the 9th. Seeing no other questions, it looks like we'll come back in a few weeks. Thank you so much. The next part of our agenda is going to be from Section E, items from other committees. And while staff go ahead and make their way to the table, I'll make a quick comment on an information-only item, a read-only item from the packet. We have some community in the room, and I believe this is of community interest. This is a Community Stability Allocation Fund update, which is a report back from staff on the council's recent direction to distribute $250,000 in Rapid Response Funds to community-based organizations who are supporting immigrant and refugee populations impacted by current federal action. The memo for this begins on page 680 of the council packet tonight. It outlines how the partnership and coordination with the city of Kirkland worked out, and how the Redmond Human Services Commissioners were integrated into the process. Twenty-four applications were received with a total of 1.2 million in funding requests, though not all were directly responsive to council's criteria for this funding. In the end, seven organizations working in Redmond were funded with substantial grants ranging from about $20,000 to $50,000. The funding is providing navigation support for residents seeking legal services, workshops, bilingual outreach, emergency basic needs, as well as rental assistance for residents who are incredibly destabilized as a result of federal action. I want to thank everyone's swift action on this, including our planning and community development staff, my colleagues at the mayor's office. Councilmembers, if you have additional questions on this memo, please direct them to Director Helen. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda for this evening is approval of a contract with Makers for the citywide Design Standards Update. Introducing this item is Deputy Director Seraphie Allen. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Our next agenda item, as shared, will be approval of a consultant contract with Makers for the Design Standards Update. As a reminder, this was one of the one-time enhancements that was funded in the budget last year to continue the implementation work from Redmond 2050. Odra Cardenas, our senior planner, will provide more information.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. We are requesting the approval of the contract with Makers in the amount of $149,978 for the update of the citywide design standards. The work was approved in the 2025-2026 biennial budget using one-time funds. The citywide design standards project is a key initiative by the city to continue to implement Redmond 2050 comprehensive plan priorities, streamline the code, and update illustrations. The outcome of this project is a comprehensive update to the 2158 Community Design Chapter of the Redmond Zoning Code. We are requesting approval of this item as part of the consent agenda at the December 2nd business meeting. Thank you, and we are happy to address any questions.
Thank you so much, team. Are there any questions on this item from the council? Thank you. No questions. I believe we may have a council member who's not able to be here tonight, who may have some additional questions. We'll encourage her to email you all. But seeing no questions, are there any objections to this item going to consent? No objections. We'll have this back on December 2nd to further implement Redmond 2050. Very exciting. We worked on it a long time. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is approval of appointment to the Community Facilities District 2016-01 Board of Supervisors. Here to tell us a bit about this item is Finance Director Kelly Cochran. Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon. With the resignation of Councilmember Sal Houdin, that left a vacancy on our CFD, or Community Facilities District Board, for 2016-01, we, I would like to ask permission to add an item to the consent agenda that would appoint Councilmember Nueva Camina to the 2016 Board of Supervisors.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I will go ahead as chair and open it up to other comments. The other two members of the Board of Supervisors from the council are here at the table with us. So Council President Kritzler.
Yeah, I would just say, as one of the Board of Supervisors members, I would be very excited to have Councilmember Nueva Camina join our body. So I think she'd bring a lot of great perspective to the wonderful public-private partnership work that we serve in governance over. So happy to support this.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Well, I would say that it would be obvious that I would support this, but perhaps I wouldn't, but I am. I'm very supportive of this, and I'm very much looking forward to being able to serve Redmond in this capacity. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I know when I joined the Board of Supervisors, I got a really great staff briefing, just kind of on the history of these community facility districts. If you haven't already had one of those, be sure to ask for one, or we're happy to, I'm sure, I'm volunteering myself and my colleague here, but I'm sure we're happy to fill you in also. Thank you so much. The community facilities districts, as the council president said, are a public-private partnership whereby a local large employer has invested in infrastructure that would not otherwise have happened as quickly in the city of Redmond, and has resulted in some wonderful improvements. So thank you, Councilmember Nueva Camina, for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to ask if there are any objections, because there are no objections. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Council Vacancy Appointment Process. And here at the table, we have COO Melissa Files and Director of Human Resources, Catherine Laird. Welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon, council. Last week, as you know, we brought you a process to fill the vacancy that is in council position number one. What I need from you today, so what I'm recommending, is that you gave us some edits to the supplemental questions on the application. Per the timeline, we would like the applications to go out tomorrow. So what I would like you to do is just give a thumbs up to those revised supplemental questions, which you will find in Attachment A on the very first page, or give us any other edits that you might like. Then I am going to have a meeting with council leadership to talk about the ranking process. We have a little bit of time to figure out what the ranking process looks like. So we will come back to you in December with a ranking process and how we're going to get through the candidates that apply for this position. And if you have any questions for Catherine and I, we'll try to answer them.
Awesome. Well, thank you for being so clear on what's the piece of feedback we need a thumbs up or thumbs down on. The five application questions in the packet, are there any comments on the questions that have been updated a little bit since we saw them last? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. No questions on it. Thank you for taking the feedback and doing, making the edits on there and bringing it back to us so quickly so that we can stay on track.
Great. Thank you. Council President Kritzler.
I am good with the changes to the questions. I really like the change on the community service experience question, because I think it gives the opportunity for people who, maybe they haven't necessarily done something as a commissioner in the city, but they have been very active out in our community, to be able to share about that, and we'll be able to get the breadth of experiences as part of that question. So, and then I see a couple of these. The last one, I think, is a great changed question to what do you believe is the role of local government in Redmond. I'll be very interested to read the applicant's answers to that.
Thank you. And I will acknowledge that that was a suggested edit of mine. Just, I think this gets to the intent of the prior question, but inadvertently created a little confusion about the council's role and relationship to staff in the city. We have been joined in council chambers by Councilmember Anderson. Thank you for joining us. Are there any other comments on the questions for the application? Okay, I'll call for, oh, excuse me, Council President Kritzler.
Sorry. No other comments on questions for the application. I'm happy for you to release that application. I just wanted to note that I think it might make sense for us to revisit, since this is a super-packed agenda today, but for us to revisit before we actually go through the process, the, what's in Attachment B on the criteria that we'll be looking at, and to narrow down on those supplemental questions, as well as I know a smaller group of us will be talking about and coming back with clarity on how the ranking process will work. But I think it would be great for the council to talk about what criteria we want to use when we're evaluating those applications, and I appreciate the additional information that's in the packet.
Definitely. We plan to come back in December to talk about kind of the rest of the process, ranking, criteria, how things are going to work when we, again, have a little more time to do that.
Wonderful. At this time, I'll call for thumbs up on the five short-answer questions. Seeing unanimous thumbs up in the room, so I believe we have clarity on that, and the applications will go live tomorrow.
They will.
How exciting. Thank you so much for all your wonderful work on this.
Thank you.
At this time, we will circle back to Section C of our agenda and reverse the order of the two items in that section, which means our next item is Housing Framework Report. Introducing this item, we have back Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, Seraphie Allen, as well as Jeff Churchill, Brooke Buckingham, and Ian Lefcourt. Welcome, team.
Thank you. We're very excited to present this item. To orient the council, staff are providing this series of presentations. Today will be the first of four, in part due to council and the executive's office request, following your discussion regarding the housing and human services priority during the budget last year. And so, we hope that through this series of presentations, the council and the public will come away feeling informed about the work underway on the Housing Action Plan, the Human Services Strategic Plan, Redmond 2050 Implementation, and have a holistic view of the kind of financial investments and big wins we've already had, which are quite numbered in the last few years, and then solicit the council's direction on the work to come. So today's presentation will be an overview, as I said, with deeper dives starting next year. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff to begin the presentation.
I believe Ian is going to be kicking us off, but Buckingham, Human Services Manager.
And I'm Ian Lefcourt, Principal Planner. I use he/him pronouns, and we are excited to talk about housing and human services with you. It feels like it's been far too long. We recognize the tight agenda tonight, so we're going to go a little bit more brisk than we normally would like to, and we will be available for any follow-up questions as needed. The presentation goals here are to, one, lay the foundation of this four-part presentation, share some of the process reasoning, share some of the underlying values, staff's intent for council participation, and then specifically for this presentation, we'll dive into some more of the existing conditions, the housing framework, and what we've already accomplished and where we want to go. Here are my graphic design skills at work. The overall framework we are presenting is three pillars. Why three pillars? Because affordable, equitable, and inclusive housing is complicated. There are many intersecting components that range from macroeconomic factors, local social factors, a lot of different pieces. Part of the outcome of framing our discussions in these three pillars is to help focus different actions, conversations, and ruminations to make sure that we have a scoped, focused intent to make tangible progress. We acknowledge that in some cases, a specific topic may not fall neatly into one of these pillars, but overall, it will help us go. So what are these three pillars? The first is to build more housing faster. The second is to get people housed. For community members that have already experienced a loss of housing, we're going to get them into stable conditions and support a continuum of care. And then keeping people housed is that next stage where we will help provide And then keeping people housed is that next stage, where we will help provide supportive services, rent stabilization, things that will help people who are already in homes stay in homes. As a reminder, here is Redmond 2050. You might be asking, where is all of this housing and human services work going to live? Well, in the hierarchy of planning, the actionable directions will live in strategic plans. Currently, the city of Redmond has the Human Services Strategic Plan and the Housing Action Plan. These are nested underneath our Redmond 2050 Comprehensive Plan, the centerpiece of local planning efforts. And as a reminder, the Comprehensive Plan is adopted and sets direction for what we want to do. These conversations and plans will implement the Comprehensive Plan that we all already adopted. Now, there are important factors about our existing Strategic Plan for Human Services and Action Plan, which we will discuss further in the presentation. Many high-level goals here for Redmond 2050, but the overall takeaway is that Redmond 2050 sets a path for a more inclusive, resilient, sustainable, equitable community, whether that's in our local creative economy, our urban spaces, our housing. All of those pieces are represented, and some of the goals specifically to housing show up with specific approaches for collaboration, cooperation, investment, and all manner of direct proactive, city-oriented approaches to making tangible benefits to our community. We also need to be aware of the larger planning context. The Growth Management Act requires the Washington State Office of Financial Management to set population projections, which are then distributed to counties, and the jurisdictions within those counties have a discussion to figure out how much growth is going where. Recent state legislation in 2021, House Bill 1220, also requires cities to plan for housing at all income levels. King County updated their countywide planning policies to establish these estimated housing need at those variety of income levels. The high-level takeaway, 73% of our net new housing is estimated need for serving households at 50% AMI or below. That's nearly 20,000 housing units that need to serve households that are typically not served by conventional market rate housing in our community and the broader East King Here's a summary of our Housing Action Plan and Human Services Strategic Plan, the HAP adopted in 2021, and the Human Services Strategic Plan adopted in 2022. Both of these items have ongoing actions, but were broadly structured to be five-year plans. We are coming up on the end of that. It's also important to recognize that while both plans had needs assessments associated with them, they both occurred at the start or right before Redmond 2050 really started getting underway. So, a lot of those existing conditions and needs were robustly fleshed out through that Comprehensive Plan update process. But the major takeaway is that both plans predate major state legislative changes, and the key assumptions have shifted enough that it's worthwhile to take a look at these plans and give them a refresh. And we've also made very tangible progress. Each of these two pie charts shows the amount of progress we've made for the relative actions in those plans. Now, the green represents those that we've accomplished. The yellow represents those that are partial, underway, or are those ongoing items. And the blue are items that are not begun, or importantly, are candidates for reevaluation. For example, the Housing Action Plan includes an action centered around better multilingual representation for our services and documents. That item is important, and also, it shows up in our city's Ready Plan, it shows up in our Comprehensive Plan. So, it may be appropriate to remove this from the Housing Action Plan specifically and fold it into the broader umbrella of a more high-level city direction. It's not saying we're going to get rid of those actions, it's saying we're going to reevaluate them. Here are some of the significant accomplishments we've already achieved, and I want to pause and emphasize this slide, because Redmond has done an enormous amount of good for our community. It is a common psychological phenomenon that high performers do not treat themselves as high performers. The people in this room have made the world a better place. You have invested $10 million just in the previous plan for affordable housing. That's real change. That's not something every jurisdiction does, and that's really important, because moving forward, most of the work yet to be done will require direct funding. It will take dollars. We've already done an excellent job of focusing on tools that can be done with no or minimal costs. I'll also turn it over for Brooke to highlight some of the human services accomplishments.
Great. Thank you. And Ian is a hard act to follow in presenting, but I'll do my best. So, I think it's really, it's important to acknowledge the great work, and especially in the field of human services, when a lot of it is hard, daily needs that we're seeing, and just to really celebrate, I have to tell myself that, to celebrate the accomplishments. So, just to touch on some of those things, with the Get People Housed, two great initiatives coming to Redmond, one that's already been here for about a year and a half, the Health Through Housing, Haven Heights, over in the Overlake area, still not up to full capacity, but that permanent supportive housing has been a great resource for our homeless outreach team, as well as other community referral partners, such as our local shelters, in getting people that have been constantly homeless housed and supported. So, that project should be fully at capacity later next year, I believe in spring or early summer. More to come on that. And then, we also have been working closely with the Plymouth team to, really exciting to see that coming to Redmond as well. Speaking of homeless outreach, really, I think that this is certainly, we take it for granted, but we've had this program in place for almost 10 years, so in 2016, and that was really a unique model to bring homeless outreach in-house. It was a pivot from what the city had been doing before, where we typically do provide out, or do contracts out for direct service, but bringing that house, we have seen so many positive outcomes with the strong partnerships that our homeless outreach team has with police, and being responsive, immediately responsive, and growing that team, so we now have two. And then, I would also just say that I personally think that we can credit that to the application in Bellevue, Kirkland, Issaquah, and that those teams, those cities have now internal outreach teams, so, and they work very closely together. So, under Keep People Housed, the top pilot project, and when you just think about like things that we can, we hear about, and you can immediately respond. So, this was an apartment complex that I believe over 70% of the households were behind on rent. So, once we heard this, we quickly worked with Hope Link to establish a program and provide rental assistance to those households, and have some lessons learned about what works when we can do very targeted resources in a community. So, very exciting. Council passed tenant protection ordinances, and obviously, you know, we just continue to hear about the funding gap, but being able to maintain our investment, particularly as we were expecting a funding cliff with the loss of open dollars. So, those are just a few examples. There's many, many more that we could probably spend a whole study session on, but I'm going to move to the next slide and talk about next step for the strategic plan. So, as Ian mentioned, those are coming to expiration next year, and it is a big body of work to implement new strategic plans, so we really want to take this time. Most of what's already in our strategic plan is still relevant, and so how can we look at those strategies and say, okay, are these still things that we need to continue working on? And look at work that's already been done in our community. So, Hope Link just completed their needs update, Bellevue did a needs update. So, how can we leverage some of the information that we're hearing from the same communities that we would be doing outreach, and take that information and say, okay, what does that mean for Redmond, and how do we respond to what we're hearing from the community? So, more to come on that, but Ian and I will be putting our heads together to think about how do we combine these two plans and really focus the actions. So, as the previous slide showed, almost 50 actions in the Human Services Strategic Plan, and about 25 in the Housing Action Plan. So, how do we really focus our work with the capacity that we have? So, let's see here. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but I do think that we need to be mindful of the environment that we're in, so we, you know, can do a lot of great things here in Redmond with our team, with our community partners, but there's just so many external factors, and also just reminding ourselves what role we have in that and what we can influence. So, we know that locally, we are, have really shown our values and our priorities by council's commitment to increase and maintain and increase investments in this work. So, that is wonderful. In King County, we know that population is expected to increase, and highly competitive funding processes. So, all of the grant rounds, you know, far exceed, the asked far exceed the available funds. So, that is certainly a challenge, county budget deficits and state budget deficits as well. I think we all know, I don't have to talk a lot about what's going on at the federal level, but that is certainly a huge impact, and it's been what I've actually been spending a lot of my time on in recent months, meeting with our community partners to figure out, okay, what does this mean for our local community, and how can we respond, recognizing that we can't solve everything, but certainly, the Community Stability Fund that council awarded was a step in the right direction. So, thank you. So, as far as next steps, this was just our intro to our plan on how we're hoping to present this series of topics, and our next presentation is scheduled to be at a committee meeting, and that would be in February, and then again in April and June. And we'll talk on the next slide about, and while our business is happening, we're going to be doing this strategic plan refresh, in hopes that we can have some learnings that may inform budget deliberations. So, this is what we're proposing, and it's probably not an exhaustive list, but when we come back to council on the topic of build more housing, you can see the ability list here, I won't go over all of them, but talking about process streamlining, flexible zoning, incentive MFTE program, under Get People Housed, talking about the Step Housing Model, which is the shelter transitional emergency impairment and supportive housing, and touching base briefly with council on some of the work that King County Regional Homelessness Authority is doing, and how we work with them in the, in the, being part of a solution in solving homelessness. So, Get People Housed, there's a lot of topics there. So, really, I hope in each of these conversations, just to talk about kind of some of the trends, data, what we're doing, what opportunities there may be in each of these areas, and we would like to take this time to hear from council, are there any other topics or areas where we should be doing a deeper dive? And I believe Ian also is planning to do a sneak preview of the housing dashboard. So, I don't know if you want to do that first and then take questions, or?
Sure. That sounds good to me. And as always, we must express gratitude to the people who made this happen. That includes Long Range Planner Odra and two members of our TIS team, Stacy and Marcus. They are very patient with me, because we had a lot of aspirations for this. Oh, that is zoomed out. Okay. So, this is the headline. It now dynamically pulls all of our total housing units in service from our in-house permitting software. That means that 37,000 figure is dynamic. It automatically populates as it comes online. The right headline square, Affordable Housing Units in Service, over 1,000. And importantly, currently, that number only reflects inclusionary zoning and MFTE affordable housing units. So, nonprofit, housing authority, those affordable housing units are not yet reflected in there. This will be a very useful tool for internal initially, and as it's built out, externally facing tracking. As we recall in the slide deck, we had to make sure we know how many affordable housing units are being provided at specific AMI levels. What would you look at that? So, we're going to keep building this out, keep hoping to iterate upon it. We'll have our glossary updated for all the technical questions, and we hope to continue sharing with you the progress as we move through this process. But right now, we'll go back to overall questions on this project.
All right. Thank you so much, team. I do see a hand already. We have a lot to get through, and so here's what, here's what I'm thinking, actually, whoever's running the presentation on the staff side, if you could go back to the proposed engagement topics, it's the second to last slide, that would be helpful. And as we go around to the council, there are three things that it would be helpful to get your feedback on. Number one, what do you think of an integrated housing and human services strategic plan? And what kinds of information might you need in order to inform a decision like that? The second is, as you look at this list of the proposed briefings that are coming forward, are there additional, more specific questions or topics that you want to see? So, the plan, the topics, and I bet you have comments on the very brief dashboard preview that we got, so feel free to throw those in, too. The first hand at the table was Councilmember Anderson.
Two or three questions. I am, I'll back out, and if I have comments, I'll come and visit you in the public. The question I had was for Mr. Lefcourt, great dashboard, and I was wondering if you're going to be able to use that for projections eventually.
We have a separate Demographer project moving forward, so the hope is that the two would speak to each other, but that one specifically will focus just on reporting of existing stock.
Okay, great.
And in development.
Okay, great. So, then we'll be able to see something like our 2050 projection plus that picture of where we are now, and we'll say, okay, how are we doing on neighborhood? I love the neighborhood one, that was good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. I'm going to make this as brief as absolutely possible. The dashboard is incredible, that it's live numbers. I'm really happy and very proud of the work that went into that, so that's incredible. I know that Redmond continues to meet and exceed all of our numbers when it comes to providing housing, and we're on plan, you know, as far as like what is it that we've committed to doing, and we're our word in doing that. Question that I had was in recent policy changes at the federal level, they're specifically making deep cuts for homeless and for permanent supportive housing. So, my question is, in thinking about sustainability, being able to ongoing, do we have contingency plans? Have we identified the areas that we may be impacted by, and can we, do we have space to pivot? And then, on the topics, when, early when I was having conversations about, do I even want to join Redmond Council, do I want to run for it? Housing, of course, was a big topic, and they said, well, are you going to fix the housing crisis? I think that that is entirely a way too big, tall order, because as soon as we think that we've got a handle on one area that's driving the housing situation, then it's like a Hydra. You take care of that, that one, you cut off that head, and three more pop up, and I think that this, this shows it very well. The one thing that I, that I've been able to identify in the last few years, and but I don't hear it being talked about in conversation, is where we will have new, new inventory added at or above market rate, and then it should then open up lower-end, more affordable units, because people will then move into them, they'll upgrade. However, what we're seeing is that lower-end unit, that lower price point, then gets torn down, and another at market or above gets put into it. So, it really doesn't do anything like that theory. Love the theory, love the concept, but we're not seeing it walked out here. So, how, and I don't know what the answer is, that's why I'm asking for you to noodle on it. How do we, how do we navigate that to where the theory does work and we can practice that? Thank you.
We can add that. Council President Kritzer.
Thank you so much. A lot of good thought has gone into this presentation, so thank you for, for bringing all this together. I think a couple, couple thoughts, actually, I'll just go backwards in terms of the three questions. So, in terms of the dashboard, I would appreciate to have those nonprofit units there in the future. I assume that's just a future functionality, is that right? Okay, great. And I think that'll be helpful to be able to see, especially because we've had so much discussion about those like fully subsidized units, to be able to see how those compare to the amount of units that we to the amount of units that we create through different types of mechanisms. I also think if on that dashboard, we could have the ability to see how we're doing relative to goal. In your presentation, you showed the chart of what we want to get to. It would be helpful in those different areas to be able to see that. And I'm excited to see this, because it has been something that I've wondered since we passed the Housing Action Plan, how we're doing. I guess the last thing, which I'm wondering, I wasn't able to see from looking at that, is in the pipeline, how many units we have coming online, I think would be really helpful, both for affordable housing development as well as just housing development, because we get a lot of discussion in our community about that. And to be able to have kind of a visible view of where we're at, at the pipeline and the estimated pipeline for both types of housing, whether that's on this public dashboard or just something that the council could be more regularly briefed on, I think would be really useful to have at our fingertips as we engage in discussions around housing in our community, and how our policies are enabling more housing. So, and then in terms of these priorities, I think these are definitely, I love the bucketing of these priorities. And in terms of the timeline, I'm wondering whether the keep people housed, I noticed that's the last piece on your timeline for us to look at, given the, what various people in our community are experiencing and what we hear about a lot, and also the fact that we have this community stability funding, which we allocated some of it, but we still, I think the council has been looking for this year to be able to get recommendations on how we allocate the rest, which I see this as the answer is to think comprehensively and to say, here's where we think it could be most impactful. But I think a good chunk of it going towards the keeping people housed, having those recommendations sooner, I think would be helpful. And so, my opinion would be to see that item, those items come forward sooner in the process for council discussion. And have that tied to, I really do hope that by early 2026, we can have the discussion about how we want to allocate the rest of the money that was budgeted, because our community needs the support now, and we did allocate the money for it. And so, I think identifying where that should go is going to be really important, especially even as one of the, the read-only item tonight, we were able to spend some of that money, but we saw the scale of additional need through that, that funding request. And I'd love to be able to revisit that sooner in the new year. And then, what was the, the third question was, or the first?
How do you feel, Council President Kritzer, about the idea of a combined human services and housing action plan?
Great. I like the idea of combining the plans. I noticed that you said we likely wouldn't need additional consultant support, because I think my only question when I first saw it was, we did invest a lot of resources into developing both of those plans, we did a ton of community engagement. So, figuring out, how do we take what's in those plans and combine them? I guess my only question on that, and that I had when we did both of those plans, is as we look forward to the next biannual budget, what is the capacity that is needed to be able to achieve these visions? I'll specifically mention, I mean, on human services in particular part of the plan, we have two amazing human services staff, one of them sitting right here with us, that do the human services funding pieces, in addition to our homeless outreach team and others. But I think really, we have two positions, and that seems like a lot to put on, on that team, in addition to working with our planning team. And so, I would just be interested in whether, I think this is an area we want to focus, and whether we could, we can really have that conversation that I think we keep saying is down the road, of what is the capacity we really need internally to be able to administer and meet the need of our, of our community around us? So, I'd love to see that come back to us with some recommendations.
Thank you. Seeing no hands online at the moment, I'll go ahead and add my thoughts regarding the plan for integrating the two strategic plans. I think something that would be super helpful is actually, much like we have with the ESAP, having the index of the action items that either have been completed or are in process, having, having that full list will help us have a really nice visual. And another question I have related to the integrating of the plan is related to the role of our commissioners, and which commissions will likely been involved. I've actually been having some pretty high-level conversations with commissioners of late. Now that the heavy lift of Redmond 2050 is, is complete, there's a bit of like, what now? And it looks like you all did an incredible job of coming up with the next project for at least a couple of our commissions to engage in. But it would be helpful to understand kind of what are the questions that we might need them to noodle on for us? Regarding the briefings, my, for me, the one that's most important is the first one, because of the dashboard, actually, that you were able to preview with us tonight, the conversations that we are having regionally at the Growth Management Planning Council and at the Growth Management Planning Board are related to now delivering on the plan that we set forward. So, it is a performance measurement. For me, it's, the vision would be a performance measurement dashboard that identifies the pipeline a couple of years out, whatever the permitting can show us, what units are coming online, at what level of affordability, and in what neighborhood. I understand that probably building these dashboards is harder than you would think, so I also very much understand that, too. But that's, just so it's clear, that's kind of where my head is at. I appreciate the suggestion from Council President Kritzer. However, I do also know that letting the legislative session, legislative session in the first part of the year settle out can actually leave us with a bit of an answer as to what is the actual gap that the state wasn't able to, to fill. So, there, there could be value in leaving it there. Check my notes one more time. I think that's it. And also just, wow, look how much of the Housing Action Plan has already been completed. That is incredible. All right. Seeing no other hands online and having gone around, staff, do you have what you need? Deputy Director Allen.
I just wanted to give one last shout out, if you all aren't aware, but Ian was awarded the Barbara Grace Award at the American Planning Association Conference last month, as you can tell why. So, just wanted to give a shout out for that and say thank you to the council, and we'll work on these next topics.
Thank you, and congratulations again, Mr. Left Court. Wonderful. Thank you. We will move on to our final item of the night, informational item. Thank you so much, team. Informational item number one from section C is the Flock Automated License Plate Reading ALPR cameras. Here to chat with us tonight is Chief Lowe. Welcome. And we do apologize for the delay. Thank you for your patience tonight.
Of course. Where would we like to begin?
That's a, I'm sorry, chief, I believe we spoke earlier today about what the, let me, let me scan to my notes. We did speak earlier today on this topic. So, council has previously taken action to pause the Flock Automatic License Plate Reader Program. In our packets tonight, we have several pieces of information, including the information that we did ask the chief the last time we were in committee with him to, to get back from the vendor. If you have no opening remarks, chief, then I will go ahead and open the floor up to questions for the council. I believe that this item was scheduled in part to consider the future of our contract. And so, one key question that would be helpful in answering tonight is, would the council like a legal briefing on our options with this contract and possible next steps? So, with that, council, I will leave it up to you for your comments and questions.
Yeah, so the comments, I would like to see after, you know, this conversation, we move in the appropriate direction to reactivate the ALPR camera system. We can have a conversation around some of the safeguards that are already in place, some potential modifications to the existing program that we had previously talked about as relates to the retention of the data as a result of previous actions by council and conversations. I've spoken with the city attorney. We've reviewed the state laws around the retention schedule, retention timeline for this particular dataset, and we do have the ability to modify it from the current 30-day retention that it's currently set, set at. Additionally, in looking at the operational aspects of it, and based on some previous conversations, both when this program was first brought forward, reducing that timeline operationally to 10 or 12 days is, in fact, doable and functional for us from the police department perspective. So, that is one additional step or modification that can be made, you know, to the program to reactivate. One of the other concerns or points that was brought out was about the vendor in particular. There are, or there will be another option available for us in the very near future, so we can explore a different vendor for a similar outcome or solution. And then I'll conclude with the legal aspects of it. As it stands right now, to cancel the program outright would be a breach of the contract that we currently have in place, because there is no, I'll say, cause for the cancellation of the contract, other than mistrust of the company itself. And as part of your packet from the previous committee meeting, there were six items that were brought forward as concerns. All six of those items were presented to the company, and they provided what I will call affirmative responses to those concerns, to include the council vice president's exact words for cancellation of the contract for a material breach. So, all of those concerns or issues were addressed by the company. Additionally, these, this program was funded with two different grants, so that potentially could be considered a gift of public funds if we just cancel the contract outright. Or the other option with that is it would have a financial impact on the city to reimburse the grantors for the particular money for that particular program. And then if we stayed in, going this direction with a cancellation of the program, it would likely hamper us from looking at other vendors or other solutions, because we breached a contract with one company, potentially to enter into a contract with another company. And so, that would not bode well, obviously, for the city, and could expose us to other potential litigation possibilities. And then, said lastly, but one more lastly, by canceling the program, it could also jeopardize future awards of grants from those two grantors, one being the Department of Commerce and the other being the Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority. So, those are things I would hope that the council would consider as we move forward and, and look to reinstitute this program, like I said, potentially with additional safeguards to then allow us to look at potential other solutions and move forward, because I do, you know, firmly believe in the technology and in this program, and will look to keep this tool available for us in the community.
Thank you, chief. And I will acknowledge that this meeting is over time. If it's okay with the council, I'm happy to facilitate the pieces of the conversation until we get to a set of next steps for whatever is needed. We are running out of time with the year, so is, is that okay generally? I see at least one thumbs up and a head nod. Thank you. So, I think the first question is for council members who are interested in hearing more or discussing with the chief, information was included in the packet or said tonight. Do you have questions that would influence your interest in reinstating the program? Maybe let's handle those questions first. Councilmember Anderson.
Do we have information on what particular neighborhood or location of the camera might have been an issue? There's more than one camera, so is there one in particular that was less popular than the others that you could just pause or turn off?
No, to my knowledge, there is not a specific camera that is in question or concerned. It was the, you know, I guess the overall technology itself seems to be what the concern is. And then, obviously, the University of Washington report that came out that identified other programs in other municipalities that had their data accessed by federal authorities and others. And I would note that we were not listed in that program because of the safeguards that we have in place for our particular program. And since that report has come out, there's been, I'll say, some discrepancies pointed out in the report, because it essentially was a summation of multiple public records requests. And there was no corroboration done in some of those cases. And so, it, it wasn't exactly, you know, as it was reported. But then again, I go back to our program, we were not listed in that report because we have the proper safeguards in place. And I'll reiterate, we did both an internal audit and an external audit, and none of our data was accessed by federal authorities, nor was it accessed by any other outside entity, again, because of the safeguards that we have in place.
Thank you. Noting the complicated answer to a simple question, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, chief. I have another question online. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, chief, for being here. Couple of questions. Do you recognize, well, let me, I'm sorry, let me ask this other question first. What is the difference between this technology in your mind versus the other public city-owned cameras that we have, meaning the school's own cameras and all of the other cameras? Isn't, if we're acknowledging that people are being surveyed and that the data is being collected, and that potentially a federal government that, let's just be honest about what we're talking about, has some level of hostility towards civil liberties, what is the difference between the Flock and the other cameras that we have? In, as far as exposure?
So, the other two cameras mentioned are for very specific purposes. The other cameras are traffic cameras, so they are not, you know, specifically capturing license plates. The school speeds on enforcement cameras are specific for speed enforcement. So, it's, I'll say it's different, but yes, it could essentially be the same, because those are datasets and data points.
Right. Okay. Appreciate that. So, the, but, but, I mean, I'm not saying they are, they're not, they are or they're not vulnerable. But I guess I want to get your view, is you've said appropriate protections in place. Do you acknowledge, or do you believe that, that anytime we're collecting data, that data can, if people have the will and they have the capability, is there really any protection to, to keep that data from falling into the hands that weren't supposed to get it? I mean, isn't that technology susceptible? Do you, do you believe that, that there is strong enough protection that people shouldn't be concerned about this?
So, all technology is, is subject to vulnerability. And yes, I acknowledge people's concerns, and I acknowledge that, you know, people, you know, have a right and should be concerned. But I also believe that we, we as a city, as a department, have an obligation to put forward the, you know, I'll say best protections that we can and have available to us at the time, which, again, I believe we have done, as evidenced by the fact that our data was not indicated in those reports. And I keep going back to that, because that is a strong part of the argument against this particular technology. So, we do and have demonstrated that we have the appropriate safeguards in place for our program.
And I appreciate that, chief. I do. I appreciate your, your concern about the technology being discussed in a way that says it's, it's not worth it. And I, and I, I understand your position, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. I really appreciate the efforts that this council and our chief of police have, have gone through to be able to establish a data governance policy that has, to date, kept our residents' data protected and used specifically for the purposes as outlined. And I really appreciate the efforts that you've done on that. I think the question at hand, as we've heard from residents and as we've seen reports from other jurisdictions, is whether or not we want to continue with this and what the potential risks might be going forward, both given different kind of legal issues as well... potential risks might be going forward, both given different kind of legal issues as well as, as well as just what we're learning from seeing the vendors' engagement with other cities. And we have seen, I think to the question of whether or not we might be able to explore ending this contract, you know, we have seen cities from Texas to New York to California to Arizona to Illinois either suspending or, or ending their contracts over concerns. So there, there is seriously, serious concerns, not just in our own state, but from cities across the country about this. One question, so, so I guess I am, I am interested in pursuing a conversation about what it would look like to explore terminating this contract. The, I did, in the MOU that we have with them, the 12th clause of that is termination for convenience. And it says, either party may terminate this MOU for its convenience at its sole discretion by providing 30 days prior written notice of termination effective immediately after such notice. And upon termination of this MOU, customer will immediately cease all use of Flock services. So it's, it, that reads to me like either party within 30 days' notice could actually terminate the contract. It doesn't actually say there needs to be a particular cause. We certainly, I'd be happy to have that discussion further, but I, I guess that would be a question I have because I do see that, that question on, on there. I think you also brought up about the cost and I think we should look at that and about the fact that these were grant-funded. I'd really, I'd like for our council to be able to get some more information as we talk about this and we continue to look at the, at the, the risks and benefits of using this technology, though we also look at if we were to pursue that, what the potential costs would be and what the avenues would be. So I would just say I'm interested in having that conversation. We've heard a lot of concern from our residents about this. And, and I will also note, we did decide to implement this technology because we saw that there was an opportunity to be able to use technology as a way to address public safety needs, especially when we were seeing quite a bit of theft related to stolen vehicles or other types of flagged vehicles. And, and we had a lot of discussion at that time and a lot of discussion about data privacy. And now the conversation has evolved and I think we, we, I'm glad we have taken a pause and we can take some time to look at this again. So, so I guess those are some of the things that I would like for our next conversation on this, would be to get some more information beyond what you shared tonight on what that, that conversation would look like so that we can weigh that, that path forward.
Thank you, Council President Kritzer. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. I'd be interested in, in continuing the conversation about like what it would look like both if we continued and as well as if we ceased. We, we heard, you know, we, we want the best protection possible for our residents and absolutely we most definitely want that. I would be very interested in how do we handle the communication around the mistrust of the, of the company versus our community's mistrust of us? We've heard from a number of community members saying, hey, we don't want this. So if we did move forward, then how do we navigate that conversation and communication around, okay, well, you know, this, we laid out, this is the cost and how we would need to reimburse for the grants and that, but then at what cost to the, the cost of mistrust for the community and how we, we kind of thread that needle? Also, when we first started discussing this about a year and a half ago, I had brought up, why do we need it for 30 days? Can we go, you know, as low as three days? So I'd also be curious for the justification of the, the 10 to 12 days and where that number came from and what would be the absolute bare minimum that we could go down to and what would be the pros and cons of both of that? As council president had said, you know, it was, it was a different world when, when we said, hey, let's try this out. And when we're still able to, to protect our community, the question that comes up for me and especially the communities that I represent is who, who are we protecting it from? Because we've got a federal government where they are hostile right now around civil liberties or civil rights. And how do we protect against, if there is a subpoena for that? Because of course we can't, as a city, if they subpoena those records, we have to give them over. So absolutely, Chief, I'm 100% on board with you that we do need to protect our community and offer the best protection.
So to confirm, Councilmember Nueva Camina, are you interested in a conversation as a possible next step being the, a legal review with the city attorney regarding the options on our contract? Yes. Thank you. I will go ahead and chime in with my thoughts that I, I do think that a legal review and briefing on our options with the contract are the next steps. Are there any other questions or comments amongst ourselves or for the chief on this? Realizing that we do have three, which is a majority of council who is present and interested in that next step. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah. I mean, as you go forward, I will likely not be part of the conversations. Talking with our legal to find out our options is part of the issue. But the real issue that the council's going to have to face and the city's going to have to face, and I think Chief Lowe was basically describing it pretty well, is these tools, these technology tools have a very important purpose. Is that purpose overwhelmingly beneficial, given the risk? And I completely agree with Nueva Camina, and I had said it as well. We are providing tools for what is emerging as a very hostile federal government. It's unfortunate that that's the reality of the day. But knowing our options about the contract is one thing. Knowing, moving towards a decision on policy of whether we're going to use this advanced technology to protect people, protect from traffic, protect them from crime, given the risk that that may fall, that data may be used in ways we don't want it to, that's the real issue at hand. So I don't, you know, the, I don't know how you, how you get there, but you know, I hope that you do.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any, Council President Kritzer?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just to lift something up, which I, I heard actually raised at our meeting last week by Councilmember Stewart, this, this question about whether we in the future also, like in the upcoming year, whether we, we have a conversation more holistically about how we engage our community around use of police technology in a bigger conversation, I think to Councilmember Fields' last point, that that is, that's also something that I think we should put on our work plan for the upcoming time in connection to this conversation. But I also think that part of that conversation is specifically about how we choose vendors and, and how we, what kinds of mechanisms we have in, in place to be able to assess, to assess our, our, our choice of vendors and accountability for the contracts that we put in place. So I think that's, that's another discussion because we may have different relationships with the different technology vendors. And the use of that data is, depends on their platforms. And, and I know one of the things that we've heard from the public, from several members of the public, is questions about the different security systems on even the, for this particular technology of where that data is stored versus others. So I think it's, it's good for us to look into and maybe something that we can bring our technology team in to discuss as well.
Thank you. So I guess I'll wrap this up by reflecting back on that, that actually we do have our data governance project that is due back to us by the end of the year. I'm not actually sure if that's on track or will now be in Q1. I, I do continue to call for like that fresh conversation we've been discussing. And I also want the team at our police department to know that the feedback, I had a line at my office hours last week. The feedback on this topic has been very robust and it is in no way a, a false binary of police technology versus no police technology. The feedback is quite nuanced on this particular tool that is constantly collecting data versus, say, the drone I just saw fly a few minutes ago behind council chambers here and, and the support for the activation of that kind of technology. So there is a nuanced conversation to have here on this particular contract. I believe that the, the council's given direction tonight that our, our next touch will be a legal review on the contract.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, everyone. With that, we will close out this item. There is one good of the order, which is that earlier today, council received a memo from Director Howland, which provides greater context for the impacts on the upcoming changes to the public defense caseload standards. Council recently reviewed our contract for public defense and it's on our consent agenda tonight. While there aren't immediately dramatic impacts, complying with the new standards will result in a five-fold increase between now and 2035. And that is why it's so important to be paying attention in the legislative process. And it is part of the 2026 legislative agenda for our coalitions, including the Association of Washington Cities. So please take a look if you haven't already. It's a beautiful table. Any other items for the good of the order? Thank you. With that, we are adjourned and we will not be here next Tuesday. So have a wonderful holiday week. Thank you.